Everybody, it's Monday, February twenty-third, twenty twenty-three at six P M. I'll call to order the Free Town Board Selective Meeting. Um, this meeting will be recorded and will be available on the town's YouTube page. Um, with that, I'll jump right in. So agenda item one, this is uh executive session minutes from ten sixteen twenty twenty-three. So I'll entertain a motion to approve and not release the executive session minutes from ten sixteen twenty twenty-three.
Motion made, motion second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item two, this is open session minutes from ten five twenty twenty-three. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve open session minutes from ten five twenty twenty-three.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So um, agenda item three is special town meeting warrant review. Um, we've been through this multiple times. Does anyone have any issues with anything particular uh specifically?
I think the only thing that I have to bring to your attention is the last article for the um civilization capital stabilization fund. And when we was that, I was putting in there just so we could pass the money. But um, as you are aware, that the fire station is gonna need some additional funding.
Okay.
But I think we probably want to table that for now. Um, which will just leave that money sitting in free cash until we come to another town meeting to appropriate that differently. And I don't believe the um income recommended this probably either. So that's the only one that I think that wasn't recommended, my correct, before.
Um, that one and the bylaw one. Uh, but for for the reasons stated, um, finance committee is just concerned that if the fire station does go over, that much over, to put it in capital stabilization, then requires a high vote to pull it up and use it as opposed to having it in free cash.
Mm-hmm. That makes sense, yeah.
Yep. Agreed.
I know somebody definitely is, it's like it was a national thing, but. So that's the only comment that I really have. I don't think we can go through any of the other questions.
What bylaws? When you're speaking of Margaret, the one you didn't recommend?
Bylaw four, I forget what number it was. Um.
Twenty-four, is that to to the bylaws?
Confession.
That one.
The one from the tax collector.
Oh, okay, very different one.
There's a few of them. Oh, the bylaws, tax cut denial suspension remuneration?
Yes, that one, that one.
And what's your um follow-up process behind that for not recommending it?
The finance committee felt that it was too vague.
Okay.
Um, and they thought thirty days was a little short. Short period of time, um, where it said that a um permit may be denied. It seemed too vague on what what were the qualifications that you could get a permit or be denied? And who is making those those choices?
Any other, I mean?
No, nothing else is changing, right? Yeah, just I mean, y'all kind of agree upon.
Yep.
Just like.
So for for Article thirty, so just to vote, we're gonna vote to, you know, um, to vote. So I mean, to is it really to support all of them above thirty? Or it is to to remove it from the article?
I mean, you had supported, or we just tabled that article?
And I guess so if that's the only vote.
Which I think will require a motion on the floor, actually. So I think you'll have to make that motion on the floor.
Okay.
If that's what we want, you know.
I mean, that makes perfect sense. So you're gonna have to go to what, two-thirds vote in order to pull it out?
Right.
And it's gonna be, if it's needed, I'd rather have it there in free cash. Yeah, see how anyone can disagree with that.
Alright, so but for this vote right now, do you need anything?
I would just vote that you wanted to, you know, I lost the moderator at the meeting.
Alright, so I'll entertain a motion to table um Article thirty.
I'll make that motion, I second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, we're gonna, so that's good. We're good with everything else, yeah?
I I I'm okay with everything else. I mean, I think we've been through these stories.
Yeah, I mean, I think we already voted on all the replevements, right?
Yeah, and I think to to Margaret's point with the finance committee, we'll take it to term on the floor.
Yeah.
Yeah. I I don't, I'm not saying I disagree or agree or disagree with you. I'm just saying that I think if it's whatever happens on the floor, happens on the floor, right? Let the people decide.
Alright, so agenda item four, we're gonna skip, um, because we don't have the final contract yet. But we'll go forward with agenda item five, which is uh I'll entertain a motion to approve town administrator's signed updating contract with Bay State Wednesday.
Alright, um, yeah, I'll make that motion, I second.
All favor?
Aye.
This contract's just for the residual for the meter project. It was about nine thousand dollars in extras.
Yeah.
But I need the contracts signed and I figured him unpaid.
Perfect. Alright, next, we have ambulance amendments and write-offs, um, for September. And it was a hundred forty-five thousand six hundred forty-two dollars on penny. Um, any discussion on that?
No.
Alright, so that I'll entertain a motion to um approve the ambulance amendments and write-offs for September twenty twenty-three. And that was a hundred forty-five thousand six hundred forty-two dollars on sept.
Motion made, second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, moving on to item seven, this is whether or not to approve the cul- uh cultural council to utilize an advanced sand for annual tree lighting on December third, twenty twenty-three. Is anyone gonna be a grinch and have an issue with that?
That being still there, so.
You good?
Yep.
Yeah.
Alright, so I'll adjourn motion to approve the cult- um cultural council to utilize an advanced sand for annual tree lighting on December third, twenty twenty-three.
Motion made, second.
All favor?
Aye.
Alright, and this is and this is correct, right? Um, the agenda item I, agenda, wow, agenda item eight is discussing vote whether approve Salem um Alz- Alzabat's snow cloud contract for winter twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. So this is for last year.
It is. He has four trucks on the um application. He's fully supplied the information on all three. He's missing one um registration, one registration. So I don't know if he wanted just to prove for the ones that he actually came through with.
Interesting. So, but this is for last year. This is like, just to pay him retrospectively for.
This is the last year. This is an article on tonight, too, for unpaid bills.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't think we can approve, didn't provide all the information for that third fourth truck, right?
Maybe we can make the motion that we would pay him once that we'll pay him for the three, but not we'll pay the fourth once he gets it done.
Yeah.
I think it's the ones that we have all the information on.
And then pay him for the four. I can put that, so we have to bring this back up. I can say, we can pay him for the fourth once we receive the required uh documentation. Alright, so I'll adjourn motion to approve Salem Alzabat's snow cloud contract for winter twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three for the three trucks that he provided mock mutations for, and the fourth one's at documentation is received.
I'll I'll provide, just got one quick question. So the amount that's on the floor tonight is for the full amount, including our four truck. Okay, so that way we don't have to wait for that.
That was my question as well. Is that that whole amount just for him?
Mm-hmm.
Just for that one?
He has four trucks.
Four trucks.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking about the amount of snow we received last year. It seems seems a little high. That's all. Uh, okay, yeah, if that that's in the books, it's in the books. So we have to pay it out bills.
Alright, motion made, second.
All favor?
Aye.
And then, agenda item nine, uh, this is still cloud contract uh winter twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four for Dylan Henry. Um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the still cloud contract for Dylan Henry for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Motion made, second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, um, do you have over personnel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm agenda number ten, discussion of vote on whether to approve the contract extension for Carlton E. Abbott Junior through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. This is a continuation we've been doing. As since he's retired, he's been with us to uh help steer things along as needed. So this is a few, a couple extra months. Any comments, questions, concerns? Alright, I entertain the motion to approve the contract extension for Carlton E. Abbott Junior through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, I'm agenda eleven, it's kind of a conundrum. We haven't had a school committee here.
Yeah, you're, they're on their way supposedly.
Alright, we'll table that for a minute and move on to item agenda twelve, which is discussion and vote on proceed with the hiring of the community program director. So for those uh, those watching online and keeping track with everything we do here at Free Town, we decided to make this uh a a program last town meeting in June. And we've had some success and then some uh, and then some insight afterwards. We gotta figure out what to do with it going forward. So the main takeaway is for the for the program is the boat ramp, which I think is the Achilles heel of the program. It's a lot of lot of work that we anticipate, or we did, or we just thought that this position would be able to fill that. Turns out it's a quite a big old deal. Then, of course, everything in community programming. So move forward, any suggestions on how we pursue the hiring? Obviously, put a post out there, get somebody interviewed and hire them. As far as what the program is or what they do, it's nothing, discussion at hand.
So I think, I think you know that it's more about how we work it and go to bat with them, so to speak, as to what what we expect of them, right? Because to, based on your your comments and the truth, we've learned is that if we have them focus in and try and fix the issues that are at hand there, they're going to spend fifty hours a week trying to deal with that. So I think it's just wanting to be coming up with a good description of the job and then
I agree.
focusing on other things so that there's some rewarding aspects to the position, or even just just.
Borders and everything else. No, I agree. I think we carve out the boat ramp and the community director position. Um, because right now it's only nineteen hours, right? So one or two options, we either keep at nineteen hours or we go up to forty hours, which hopefully be all we wanna do at this point, right? Um, but then separating the two maybe makes more sense. Adding some dedicated boat ramp specifically, and then somebody just dealing with community director positions, program program director positions. And I also started thinking about that as well. It's like, do we incorporate this individual? Help them with cultural council, council of aging? Those are really the people that kind of doing the different events in town. Can we somehow not merge, because it's a really committee, a subcommittee for them? Um, somehow they need to talk, right? There's a there's a talking aspect of that whole thing.
Mm-hmm.
So what were you thinking of that?
Well, I mean, I think the thought processes, you know, I I go back and forth between this and the park and rec director, right? Like, they're almost one mistake and they're not. So that's kind of the thought. But yeah, I think that what happens is you have, we have one whole committees in town, we know that, volunteer uh committees and boards. And they they wanna do things, but it's very difficult if you have people who work all day full-time and then they're volunteering their time at night to get um necessarily things on the ground, right? But if we didn't, a person who's being a paid position to help them put things into play, they'd be able to do a lot more. So if the cultural council got a grant or something to do a concert or something, how do they get all the logistics? Or to put it John Stewart, all the things that have to happen. You 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 are on the brain uh fireworks, you know all the little logistics that have to happen. It will it will really benefit those boards and committees, those volunteer boards and committees, to have a person internally that can help them pull the things together because they're they've got time during the day because that's their paid position. So um, it it's just a conversation of where we go from here. We know this is, you know, I think we do need to define the position so we can hire the right person um, and and decide what we do. The boat ramp is the Achilles heel.
Yeah, so I think, absolutely. So if we carve out a boat ramp, right? But I'm trying to like look into the future here. I don't want this to end up with again.
With the current person.
Who's working literally seventies a week because just in the office and then, because like we need to find someone to do that. And then also, do we have the funding? But I think if you're boat ramp only, I can see that being like a fifteen-hour a week position potential. If that's all you do, couple hours each day and then more hours a weekend, maybe.
That's the tough part of Trevor, isn't it? Like, it's the weekend. It's like, you can't leave, you know?
It's the weekend.
It's every weekend, right?
Yeah, it's every weekend.
Every weekend, every weekend, every day and stuff like that. Um.
But what if you almost did like a manager, assistant manager type thing, right? Where you had like kind of that lead person who was there, but then someone who was almost there fallback.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I I'm just thinking a lot is to what we could do. But to your point is everyone needs time off, especially during the summer. We all have families and cookouts and everything. And, you know, so I think it it would be nice for, you know, someone to do that position, but then be able to fall on someone not willing to come and do something on a weekend and know that I need to take this time off and, you know, whatever. I don't know, I'm just thinking a lot of, you know.
I mean, that sounds good, Derek. We have a lot enough time staffing.
Yeah, I. Oh, I know.
So um, funding, obviously, it's a it's a revolving fund. We, right now, we're just about right even, I think, in what we collect and what we spend on staffing. Um, we collect, you know, around twenty-five thousand dollars for the season and we spend about twenty-five thousand dollars on staffing. Uh, so we're right even. I could enable that a little bit, probably.
Because we are able to increase the fees, right? If we can justify it by.
The state wasn't really um, we already did increase the fees last year from five to ten dollars. And they weren't, we we we, I think we're the highest, we're the most expensive.
We are, and we are the most expensive boat ramp. So they're not inclined to give us a, you know, really a greater floor.
Um, can try, we can ask, but they govern that. Uh, we, but again, he was like, you're gonna be the most expensive boat ramp in Massachusetts. I don't know, it seems to be pretty full all of the time.
Yeah.
Something for, it wasn't him or the people using the boat ramp. Um, so, but I think, you know, we could, we can, I I think we could be strategic with the budget. We do have reserve funds, so we can see how it goes for a year. We do have the funding um backup if if we went over for one year, it just can't be sustainable, right? So we'd have to figure something out, so. But I like your idea of sort of manager, assistant manager, I guess, I guess then we just have to pay more. Um, and then there'll be a sign and they can swap who's in charge of what weekend on call.
Yeah, and I guess I'm thinking more of, okay, you know, the the attendant makes X amount of dollars. The assistant manager makes the attendant plus a dollar or two more. And it's not something that they're gonna be called on every single week to do something, but just knowing that they have the backup.
Yeah.
Uh, might might incentivize them a little bit more. Because they know that most of the time it's really not gonna be much more than just, you know, some little bit extra money in their paycheck more. But, yeah.
I think for the vote, I'm gonna put in to say that we will work with the town administrator to separate the functions and duties of the boat ramp and the program director to work with different councils and everything else throughout town, and the council of aging, of course. That way, that way we have time to kind of, because really it's, the ball ramp's really closed down at this point, right? Maybe here and there, I know, I know. As far as personnel and everything else, I don't. Uh, but it really opens up in the summertime, late spring, early summer time. So we have some time to kind of update that that information. But for this vote, I think just making sure that it's clear and concise, so we're gonna separate the functions, removing boat ramp from the program director. Um, and then updating what the rules and responsibilities for that person is for different councils and committees in town. What do you guys think?
Yeah, I'm with you. I just. Um, yeah, I I mean, I'm old faith with her. Yeah, making sure that what's going to happen, so.
Alright, um, back to item agenda number twelve. Uh, I'll adjourn motion to proceed with changing the title of the program, of the roles and responsibilities of the community program director, separate the function between the boat ramp and the different committees and the functions in town.
Alright, adjourn motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The only thing I want to ask is should, did you, should we have called into that motion that you were gonna have?
Oh, sorry, you're right. I've got to.
Sorry, I should have caught it.
Yep, no, I should have caught that as well. And I take, I adjourn motion to proceed with the hiring of the community program director, working with the town administrator to separate the functions of the boat ramp and the committee director, be able to have two separate positions in that in that field.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Alright, aye. All here?
Alright, good. So hello, how are you on?
How are you?
Good, so, okay, we need to have you guys open a session, right?
Mm-hmm.
Put a meeting and then there's a little, you know, unusual, so we'll clarify how to move forward with kind of joint vote. Um, I mean, this is really your your show, I guess, so.
Alright, we're back to item agenda eleven. Uh, today's agenda for number eleven is discussion and joint vote with the Free Town School Committee members on whether to appoint Charles L. LaPree.
LaPree.
LaPree, um, or Joseph Zini, present, both are present, or another candidate to the Bristol Plymouth Regional Technical School Committee Free Town Representative effective ten twenty-four, twenty twenty-three through six thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Great, thank you. Uh, so at this point, we need to just take a vote to come in session, so I'll adjourn motion, I'll second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, so if I would say aye?
Aye.
Aye, we are in session at this point. Um, totally your, the board's discretion here. Um, I know in the past, when we've had these types of votes, we've opened it up and we've kind of had each candidate answer a couple questions, um, and then it was a joint vote from there. Um, I think important, I think you folks know that this is, and speaking to Alex, this is a pretty much a four-month, five-month non-voting seat at this point. Um, until April, where we would vote in someone for a full term.
I, uh, I believe, Mr. Chair of the School Committee, that the original agreement states that the voting takes place in November, the next election will be November.
Got it.
Um, it's it's, you know, the big state, like the presidential election, and then the term actually begins in June.
Great, perfect, there it is.
So, the reason why we have until six thirty, twenty twenty-four is to reappoint somebody to the following term. That's where our end of year is and that's why we do it that way. But to Will's point, I would like to hear from both individuals, let's tell us a little bit by yourself, for those folks out in, watching from from home, um, that way we can have a clear decision moving forward. Um, uh, Mr. Mr. LaPree, that's your line.
Alright, thank you. So, um, I mean, it's Chuck LaPree. I live on Paz Drive in East Free Town. I've been a resident of Free Town since November of nineteen seventy-seven and I graduated from this wonderful institution back in nineteen eighty-one, probably before many of you in this room were born. Um, I have thirty-five years of experience as a professional educator. The last sixteen years, we spent teaching grade eight social studies at the Roosevelt Middle School in New Bedford. I retired at the end of the school year, uh, this past school year, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. I own four professional educator licenses in the Commonwealth. And during my tenure in New Bedford, um, I was quite active in the New Bedford Educators Association that I served as secretary treasurer and the vice president of unit eight teachers. So I became quite familiar with watching a lot of school committee meetings, what school committees do, what's within their purview, and also education law. Um, if selected, now, obviously, a lot of work is taking place to get Free Town to this point, to actually be joining the district. And if selected, I pledge to represent the interests of the town and ensure that we're getting our buddies worth. Because, yeah, we made a serious financial commitment and I would do my best to help strengthen a, an already strong program. I'm an enthusiastic supporter of vocational technical education and the opportunities that it's gonna give to all the students in that building, not just the Free Town students. Um, some of my best students, a lot of my best students actually went on to Greater New Bedford VoTec. And as I told everyone that entered the doors of my classroom, you know, you don't necessarily have to go to college to be a success in life. You know, we need good plumbers, we need good electricians, we need good tradespeople. And um, in VoTec setting, it just gives you so many options that you can go into. You can be career-ready, or you can go on and maybe pursue um like a New England tech, you know, go from there, or go to a four-year or two-year college. Um, I have an entry plan in mind that if selected for the position, I would like to meet with Dr. Bagel Hayes and actually believe I went to school with him in my back life at UMass Darnett, a lot of those education classes. I'd like to meet with him and um and just spend, you know, a day at the school, getting a good sense of what the climate and the culture is like. And of course, I'd like to attend a lot of the events, you know, up there as well. Um, I'm gonna be an enthusiastic um participant in anything that goes on at Bristol Plymouth. But above all, I'm gonna be a listener. I'm there to listen, I'm there to advocate for Free Town and the needs and interests of our young people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaPree. Thank you, I appreciate that. Mr. Zini, do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
I am involved with um both Old Colony and BP in different committees. I'm an alumnus from BP. Um, that vote before most of you were pulling, as he said, um. The reason why I wanted to be part of the school committee is when I attend all of the events that I attended BP through the advisory board, the um mentor program and whatnot, uh, I believe that the school is is even far better than when I went there. Vocational education, he said, was is very important. A lot of students can't fit into a conventional high school. Great place for them to go is BP or Bristol Aggie or Old Colony, anything like that. I'm a big proponent, obviously, of vocational education. My daughter graduated from Old Colony while I was serving over there on the PTO and and a couple committees over there, uh, the Education Foundation and whatnot. But uh, the key to the reason why I wanna be there is basically saying, Mr. LaPree, it's all about the students and make sure that they, we can financially afford to do the things that they need to get done, to get them out in the world to either work or go on to further education. But the the key to me with vocational education is when these students get out of school, they can get around one and make decisions in their work world or move on to a a college education, be it two years, four years, or even a technical school. To get to school that I owe, I owe my life to, so uh, supporting them is just key to me.
Mr. LaPree, uh, thirty-five years, that's in the present time. Uh, if I asked any of your students something about yourself, what would they, what would they tell me?
They're they're gonna say that I am prepared, that I'm I've always done my homework, I'm prepared, and I'm fair.
Something you have to have in some of these committees.
That's it.
A middle-of-the-road kind of approach.
I always do my homework and know what's going on.
Zini, similar to you, I I know you 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 have thirty-five years uh school background, but you you do some patcher being part of the PTO and everything else. And what would your students and family members say about you if elected? Uh, I'm sorry, who would have asked them, obviously, Joseph Zini?
Again, I know, I'm a fair person. Um, I I have a business business background more than an education background. I've been in the industry for years and years. Um, but the people that I work, I'm willing to do anything. I think that's the thing that if you ask BP or Old Colony, anything, anything they ask for the committees as well, I'm willing to do it because the kids need it.
It is all about the kids. I think one of the takeaways from both of you are, this is for the children, you know? Children first, parents close second, town somewhere after that, um, then all of us, right? But absolutely, one hundred percent for the children first.
That's a team thing.
It is, it truly is. Um, so good representation from that candidate representing Free Town is is, I think that's why we're all here. It's very important and very thankful that we have these two candidates that are qualified to step up and and take that role. Um, a lot of long hours ahead of you, whoever that is. So, thank you. Um, open up, do you have any other questions?
No, I think.
No, I think, uh, you know, they they both answered, you you don't make this decision easy because you both come with a lot of experience, you know, to, like in Wolf's point, thank you both for showing interest in this because it's not always easy as you have to deal with. So, uh, thank you, mine's.
Alright, well, the hard part, guys, we gotta make a vote. Um, so, we do it many ways, but I think.
How how does this work, like the vote part?
I don't know, does that one of your questions?
So there's two options we can go, right? And I think we saw this in Lakeville earlier this year. Can be just a regular vote, where someone makes a motion, it has to be seconded, and then we vote there publicly, audibly, or we could do a ballot load as well, and this was a written ballot. Um, up to your discretion, um, totally open for either. But um, what do you guys think of that?
I'm all about transparents.
Yeah.
So I I think regardless, I just want to, you know, it's it's never easy to look someone in the face and have them know that you voted against them. But at the same time, I just think that we should let let it be known, I guess, right, the open, so that's.
Yeah, I think so. I I agree with you, Jared. I think, you know, ballot votes are great, but I think uh everyone watching at home and everyone in the room. Um, whether we vote for you or against you, we thank you for being here. And this is just a business decision at the end of the day to make sure that we have the person that we feel qualified to that position. So if if the person that does not receive it, please don't take it personally, because it's not personal. This is a decision we have to make between seven of us. So, um, that said, uh, I mean, I entertain a motion to go to a vote, roll call vote, and I'll take it from there.
Yeah, so we'll put, I guess, so say if I entertain the motion, right, and then did it, then. Yeah, so we'll put, I guess, if, so say, if I entertain the motion, right, and then did it, then it will jump between us and all of you, and that would be okay?
Correct.
Yeah, that's amazing.
Because I didn't know if it had to be a separate vote from you and Alex, okay. One vote.
One vote. One vote. Just go down the road and see what, what names are, then once we have that person, we entertain the motion to appoint that person until June of next year.
Make, make sense, yeah, absolutely.
Alright, I'll go first, um, listening to the votes, uh, to the information provided, I, I, uh, choose Mr. LaPree.
Okay, I also choose Mr. LaPree.
I'm gonna vote Joe, sir.
Look, I guess I'm up, I'm gonna go with, uh, Joseph as well.
Me too, me too.
For the record, to you, he is.
Yeah, Gene Flax for Joe. Jen Lo for Joe.
Um, looks like we.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
He was a student.
No, he was a student for a second.
I'll sit that bet, see.
Alright, well, that is a vote of seven, and it's five for Mr. Zini and two for Mr. LaPree. Um, again, I, I thank you both, and, um, I, I encourage you to continue the passion that you have, uh, especially Mr. La, especially you, Mr. LaPree, and, um and put those efforts to another committee or board, and, uh, continue working with the town, making sure we have the best of our students, alright, so I appreciate both of you, thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
That said, uh, I entertain the motion as far as the board's selectmen for the town of Freetown to appoint, uh, Joseph Zini for the, to the Bristol Plymouth Regional Technical School Committee, uh, Freetown representative, effective ten twenty-four, twenty twenty-three through six thirty, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make the motion.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, great.
Gentlemen, pleasure meeting.
Yeah, we just need a motion to adjourn for a Freetown vote.
Some.
Yeah, but I can, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you, Gene, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Nice to meet you.
Feel free to hang out, we have a meeting coming up.
I have crazy thoughts.
Oh, I know. Mr. Zini, good luck, let us know if you need anything from us, and.
Hey, Gene, John, you stopped posting all these pictures on vacation, it's very jealous.
This is a brat, and I go to Zog.
Bob, sorry for missing you, you're funding right there.
Feel, feel free.
Yeah.
Alright.
Congratulations.
That's to the town administrator.
Yeah, I think we just have to decide, and then we can adjourn, um. You want to join?
Lot of contracts.
Not one hot, not no hot. Yeah.
I'm saying, we're not gonna want them, I'm like, oh, it's so nice, it's nice and hot, but now I feel like. I get to work this morning, and it is, I think it's left the air conditioner's on, so it was already cold enough as it was, and then I just couldn't warm up all day.
Exactly, it gets like, it chills in your bones.
When I got home, I think I changed three or four times, I was like, nah, that's too hot now.
Uh, yeah, I, I just, I slipped over, it's, I have a, a writing surface. That's it.
I have two pens, so, one of them goes back to you.
I see you trying on your cupboards.
I saw that, I was like, thank you.
Alright, good, so with that, I will just take the motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, second.
All favor?
Aye, aye.